So if you will stand please with me for the invocation.
Gracious God, Father and Creator of all, we give thanks for the liberties and freedoms we enjoy. Grant that we may deliberate and make those decisions that are in agreement with your will through your honor and glory. Amen.
Amen.
Gentlemen, if you will come forward and lead us in our pledge, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Gentlemen, that was excellent. Thank you. Okay, I think some are staying with us and some of PAC 15 is going home, but thank you so much for coming.
Carrie Haas, Word 1. Jay Stepp, Word 2. Rose Thompson, Word 3.
Here.
Randy McDaniel, Word 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Word 5.
Here.
Laurie Crivitt, Word 6.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Tonight, first on our agenda is approval of a council meeting from August the 15th.
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. First new business tonight, a public hearing, second reading of zoning and annexation for 11 Greenacre Lane to annex into the city. Mr. Manino.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a city initiative, a donut hole annexation. What a donut hole is, is when there is a parcel of property that's still in the county jurisdiction, completely surrounded by city jurisdiction. It leaves a, basically a hole in our jurisdiction and with that, it creates issues for police protection and so forth because you have different jurisdictions responding to events and so forth. And the city had an initiative to bring in as many of these donut holes as we could to provide a clear avenue for, for the city and city services. With that, this particular piece of property was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. Appeared to be no concerns from the city departments and there have been no additions or changes since the first reading. Just a quick reminder that this is an annexation request and along with the annexation, when we annex a piece of property, we also have to give it a city zoning. So this request is to annex and rezone it to the R-20 Single Family Residential Zoning District.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Manino? Thank you, Randy. At this time, I will open the floor for any public comments and a public hearing on the zoning of this property at 11 Greenacre Lane. Seeing no one come forward, I will close that public hearing and open it up now for the annexation of 11 Greenacre Lane. Again, no one has come forward, so we will close that public hearing. I now call for a vote of the annexation of 11 Greenacre Lane.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now for the zoning part, a motion is requested.
Make a motion to approve the zoning.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And that has passed. Next on our list tonight is special use application for the property at 416 and 420 North Tennessee Street. Second hearing tonight, second reading.
Yes, again, this one, like the previous one, there have been no additions or changes since the first reading. This particular use permit is along Tennessee Street. There's the existing car lot adjacent to this. The owner is looking to purchase these two properties and with the car lot being a existing non-conforming use along Tennessee Street, similar to what we did with the Kia Automotive, to expand an existing non-conforming lot requires the approval of a use permit, which requires a recommendation of the Planning Commission and approval of Mayor and Council. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application and we are recommending it to you for your approval.
Thank you, Mr. Manino. Any questions, Council?
Motion to approve?
Whoa, whoa, excuse me. We have to have public hearings. Excuse me. I now like to open the floor for a public hearing on the zoning of this property at 416 and 420 North Tennessee Street. Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against?
Actually, Mayor, that should be on a special use application instead of zoning. Little distinction there.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, Council, I'm Shep Hilton here on behalf of the applicant and I'm here to answer any questions you may have or any other, address any other concerns that you may have. Otherwise, I would request that you approve this as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Sir David, this is incorrect. We don't.
My request for a special use application.
Yeah. So we just have one hearing? Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Open the floor for anyone who'd like to speak on special use application for 16 and 420 North Tennessee Street. Seeing no one come forward, I will now call for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Appreciate you coming. G-DOT grant for the airport drainage.
Yes, Mayor, this is an application for Design Airfield Drainage Improvement Grant, $95,000 with a 5% local match. The Airport Authority will cover the local match, so it's really a pass-through. I recommend approval of the application along with any documentation that needs to be signed and approved by the Mayor and the City Clerk.
Any questions, Mr. Porter? Dan, I think we're mighty lucky that the local match is only 5% and being paid for by the Airport Authority, not coming through city funds.
That's correct.
Isn't that correct?
Yes.
That doesn't happen at every city?
It doesn't and the Airport Authority Bank has been doing fairly well over the past couple of years, so they've been able to do that. And in the past, it's been a 50-50 split on a number of occasions between us and the county.
Good. Do I have a motion or any questions?
I make a motion to approve the grant application and the associated documentation that may need to be signed.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
You'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And it passes unanimously.
Next item, Mayor, is install access points by Telenet Systems. Our fiber department has a new provider or company that's a little like service with us and it's a lower than $5,200 to get Telenet to install that. Payback is less than eight months on that new three-year contract for that company we provide service to. I recommend approval of that work.
Any questions of Mr. Porter? Any motions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
House, Firehouse Software Annual Support.
Yes, Mayor, pro temp. This is an annual support agreement for Firehouse Software that's used by our fire department personnel. Annual cost is $6,400 and I recommend approval of the annual support agreement.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Dillinger Park Tennis Basketball Track Resurfacing.
Yes, sir.
And you appeared.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. We took bids for the resurfacing and repair of all 14 tennis courts, the two outdoor basketball courts and the 440-yard track. And then we added another work scope to it that would be for the crack repair system for all of those courts and, and the track also. Of course, we have a limited amount of money in our budget, but I am recommending the low bid and for the repair of all those courts I mentioned, as well as the work scope two for the repair of the crack system. If, if we're able to do all 14 courts and if we get a maintenance grant from the USTA, which is a 20% of the amount of money that we put into the maintenance of the courts, contingent on us receiving that, I recommend the low bid from Signature Tennis in the amount of $111,250. If we do not receive that grant, I recommend, my recommendation will be to repair courts 1 through 10 with the crack repair system. And then that, that bid amount would be $93,250. This is a budgeted amount in, in parts and recreation maintenance budget. In my memo earlier, I mentioned I did not have a letter of commitment from the Tennis Association. I do, I do now. They have committed $2,000 to us for this project to donate to us, so we'll be getting that from them. And then, again, contingent on the USTA grant, hopefully we'll be able to do all 14 tennis courts without it, 1 through 10. I've got all required documentation from Signature Tennis and then contingent on them receiving the bid and then them providing the performance and payment bonds, I recommend approval of Signature Tennis.
What's the timeframe on the grant application?
Well, they are, the USTA is still waiting on us for, they've asked for a drainage report, which Public Works is helping us with, so they're waiting on that. I can't say, hopefully within the next couple, three weeks.
Craig, I have a question.
Okay.
93-250, if we do a motion tonight and say contingent on the 20% from USTA, will that help you get a better flow for all the repair and will you be using the same people regardless of the 20% or not?
Yes, yes, we will. The, again, Signature was low bid when we add the crack repair system and, you know, because of the amount of money that we are spending on court maintenance, on tennis court maintenance, now that, that money that we're spending on the basketball courts and the track does not count towards the USTA grant. But if we spend what we're spending on courts 1 through 10, then the 20% would give us an additional $18,000, which is what the cost to, to repair the courts 11 through 14 would be.
But when you hear from USTA and if you had to come back to us to say that you got that, would that hold you up on all the projects? I mean, will you try to do them all at the same time?
Well, we will be trying to do them all at the same time, but now they will be working with, with our schedule. You know, we, you know, our tennis courts are full all the time, so we'll be doing one side of the road at one time and the other side of the road at another time, as well as our, the outdoor basketball courts. We will, we can schedule those about any time, but our, the track will have, it'll have to be done after our, our football season is over. So the contractor is aware that we have specific dates and times that he cannot be on the courts and he has to be completed with certain projects.
You have to work around all the factors.
And he has agreed to do that.
Any questions, Council? Any motion?
I'll offer the motion to accept the bid for the, all of the courts and then as an alternative, courts 1 through 10.
So contingent on USTA.
Right.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg. Next tonight, the intoxilizer for the Police Department.
Yes, ma'am. The state of Georgia mandated that we purchase a new type of intoximenter. The Police Department applied for and received a grant through the Criminal Justice Coordinating In order to, to get the grant, we had to front the money, which is $8,833. We put that on a credit card and, and then applied to get the money back. It's already in the process.
In other words, this is an item the city must have and the Police Department absolutely must have.
Yes, ma'am.
So you had to go and do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions of the chief?
Is it pretty good odds we'll get the grant?
Yes, we've already got the grant. It's up to $9,000 on the grant and we've already applied to get the money back that was put on the credit card, so it'll be in soon.
Okay.
Did you put that on your personal credit card?
No, no, sir.
That was a question.
No, sir.
Okay.
Any questions of the chief? Or a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up tonight, Etowah Drive 12-inch water main replacement. Mr. Manino?
Mayor, Council, Mayor Pro Tem. This item is the Etowah Drive Water Main Replacement Project involves replacing the deteriorated water main on Etowah Drive between Old Mill Road and West Main Street. Four bids were received for this project. C.H. Kirkpatrick &amp; Sons submitted a low bid in the amount of $1,295,319.98. This will be paid for from bond funds and we recommend approval of the contract with C.H. Kirkpatrick &amp; Sons.
Ed, earlier tonight, we talked about these 12-inch lines we'll be replacing.
It's a mixture of lines that is a very old deteriorated line. Some of them are as small as four-inch diameter. Probably the largest line through there is six-inch diameter. There may be a little bit of eight inches. It's a mesh mash. It's over 70, 80 years old. Very poor fire protection in this area currently, so it's going to significantly improve fire protection.
So there will be some disruption, but it will be well worth it.
Yes.
Just for the public standpoint, what's the timeframe on the work?
We anticipate a notice to proceed of October 1st. The contractor has five months to complete the project, so we could have construction going on until the end of February, but I anticipate he's going to jump in there and go at it pretty fast.
Thank you. Any questions? Any motions?
Move that we accept the bid from C.H. Kirkpatrick &amp; Sons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is our Tennessee Street Water Main Replacement Project. This involves replacement of the existing water mains along Tennessee Street between Leek Street and Opal Street. There, again, these, these lines date back, you know, 80 years older, older, some of them maybe 100 years old. We currently have very poor fire protection in this area and what this project will allow is to have a continuous run of 12-inch water main from Leek Street to Opal Street at Leek, on one side of the street. The opposite side will be served by an eight inch, so that any lots of record due there now can have a fire sprinkler system if they need that. So it's going to actually be a benefit to property owners up and down the street. A requirement of this project by DOT, they agreed to hold off milling and resurfacing in the street till we could get this completed, but we have to have the portion on Tennessee Street completed by the end of November. The contract does allow for 180 days of construction. There are a number of side streets, Douglas Streets, getting the water main replaced there, so we could have the work stretching out the full six months. Site Engineering submitted a low bid in the amount of $2,934,230. We recommend award of this contract with Site Engineering of Atlanta, Georgia. This will be paid for from bond funds.
Thank you. Any questions?
And Site Engineering understands that we need the Tennessee Street piece finished.
Yes. That was detailed very clearly in the contract specifications. Also, we had a pre-bid conference meeting that any bidders were required to attend and we went over that and stressed that, so.
And then when G-DOT comes in to do the resurfacing, that will go from where to where on Tennessee Street?
I'm not sure the full extent of that. I do know they'll be resurfacing part of Main Street.
I think it starts at Main, Tommy. Does it go down to MLK? Do you recall, on Tennessee Street? I guess.
It actually starts at Arto and Main, right there in front of the Opal Police Station. Goes down Main Street and then turns and goes north on Tennessee Street, I believe, up to, stay right from, we're, the intersection of Stay Route and we just had.
It's a lot of, yeah, good. Thank you.
The next.
Do we have a vote?
No, we are not.
No, I don't think so. Do I have a motion?
We have a motion.
We have a motion. A second.
Sorry.
Do we have a vote?
When's the other question?
Yes, sir, excuse me.
Excuse me. That means you're going to have quite a bit of, what are you riding, Tennessee Street in the upcoming months?
There will probably be a lot of traffic control out there.
I'm ready for a motion.
Okay. Are you ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Lot of good information. Next, please, Ed, if you don't mind continuing.
The next item is a Mission Road Gravity Sewer Replacement. The existing sewer that serves the drainage basin, which extends from Pettit Creek up to east of Etowah Drive is in deteriorated condition. This is phase one of the replacement project for this sewer. We'll be replacing the sewer between West Avenue and Etowah Drive. We received four bids for this work. Corley Contractors submitted a low bid in the amount of $66,727.10. This will be paid for from bond funds. There's a 90-day, 90 calendar day completion time for this project, but we actually expect the contractor to have the work completed by the end of October. We recommend award of this contract to Corley Contractors of Dallas, Georgia in the amount of $66,727.10 that will be paid for partially from bond funds.
Thank you. Any questions?
Does this require also the E-Verify things?
No, we had a clarification on that and this type item, E-Verify and Save is, is not required to be in accordance with the law. And part of it is, the contractor has a utility contractor's license issued by the state of Georgia, so he's already established that he meets the requirements of that law.
He given it, he's just not giving it to us.
Right.
Giving it to the state, not us.
Where's the rest of the money coming from?
What started off this, when this project originally started off, it was a budget item. This actually dates back to, I guess, about 2006 and so we had paid part of it out of budget before, before now.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve the low bid from Corley Contractors.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One more?
The, the next item is the relocation of the water main on Highway 411 North between Apex Drive and People's Valley Road. The DOT has a project where they're widening and relocating Highway 20. It's requiring us to relocate our water main in that area. We received bids from four different contractors. John Pruitt Construction Company submitted a bid in the amount of $243,363.05. Note here, the DOT is going to reimburse us $67,000 on this project for the portion of the water main that was located outside of DOT right of way on a private easement. The rest, remainder of the project will be paid for from budget. There's 180-day calendar day completion time. We anticipate people get this completed well before that. We recommend award of this contract to John Pruitt Construction Company of Marietta, Georgia in the amount of $243,363.05.
Thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve the contract with John Pruitt Construction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And I cut you short, Ed. You'd have one more.
The, the next item is pump repair for our Water Police Control Plant. This unit is one of a pair of pumps. It was originally put in service in 1990 and is needed for the operation of the plant. We sent this unit to the manufacturer for diagnostic inspection. They have provided a quote of $16,031.60 to do the needed repairs. It's considerable savings over replacement of the pump with a new unit. Water Department recommends approval of this agreement with Xylem Water Solutions. They're the manufacturer of flight pumps. In the amount of $16,031.60, this will be paid for from the budget item for plant maintenance and repairs. We do have the E-Verify and Save documentation in on this.
Any questions? It says here a pair of pumps, so if this one is sent off for repair, then we have one that, is that?
Hopefully, we're hoping the other one will keep running till we get this one back.
And we talked about this in the work session, but there is some warranty on this.
Yeah, and generally, they offer a warranty on this type of work that's the same as the original warranty.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? A motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt. Automatic opening doors at our municipal court.
Honorable Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, we recently did some, completed some renovations at the municipal court building and as a result, we now have to bring the court building completely into ADA compliance. The last leg of this is to have these two door, automatic doors installed, one in the front entrance and one in the back entrance. It's kind of a specialized process and installation. I did talk with our public work folks and they informed me that they were not able to complete the project, so I went to the construction, Earl Hightower, and asked him if he could hook me up with somebody and instead of him hooking me up with somebody, he went ahead and found a contractor to do it who is, who is very knowledgeable and very willing to do this for us. The price that was given to me through Mr. Hightower is $7,950. That is to complete both of these doors, front and back entrance. Again, it is an ADA specified item that has to be done. This is an unbudgeted item and will be, will be paid through the administrative fees currently being collected and we have all E-Verify forms on file.
Any questions? Mr. Reinhardt at the back, that's even coming into that area, isn't it, from the parking lot?
Yes.
But you can't go from that area to the court area. Is that correct?
The way, the way we've got it structured now with probation services being back there, we've got it closed off where it's essentially two, two types or two sections of the building. They can't come through us and we can't go to them without letting them open the door automatically.
And there's steps in the front?
The steps in the front have been corrected. We have been, concrete work has been done. Our public works folks were nice enough to put a runway, if you will, from the front of the building into the, into the front entrance.
Because there used to be a side entrance when it was the Police Department.
Correct. Side entrance. After we get all this done, the side entrance will not be, the entrance will be there, but the actual entrance into the court will be through the front doors. but the actual entrance into the court will be to the front doors.
So it'll be not closed off, but locked?
Correct.
So then we will be ADA compliant in probation side as well as the court side?
Yes, ma'am.
And that has to be done because of the renovation?
Because of the renovation. If we'd just gone and done a little bit of renovations, we probably would have squeaked without, squeaked by without it. But since we did some measure, major renovations, we are required by law to update our ADA policy.
Thank you. Any other questions or a motion?
Motion to approve the quote from Earl Hightower.
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
My next item is the surplus equipment. Got a, a list of surplus equipment in front of you. The city departments have come together and given you these lists of equipment. It, it includes equipment, vehicles, and, uh, some office-type stuff. They have deemed it as being either not serviceable and usable or not needed at all. After it's approved by, uh, the mayor and council, it will go to GovDeals to be sold on, on their website. On the second page of my list, a couple of changes I did want to note. The sixth item down, there are, list three rear van seats. Those were actually used today. I found out by our garage folks, they were used in a van for the DTF folks. And then the, the very bottom item where it says 15 bed frames and mattresses, those, um, should be just bed frames, not mattresses not included.
Is this where you make the decision about the bed frames?
Yes.
Yes. We would like to go ahead, counsel, and make a decision about the bed frames to donate those items to a nonprofit locally, is that right?
Technically, you can just, just declare them as scrap because they don't have to, you gotta go through a process of advertising when they are really scrap metal.
So we do want to declare those scrap? Is that what the council wants to do?
That's what we want to do.
Okay, good. So we delete that item? And are there any questions of Mr. Reinhardt with the remaining items?
Or you want, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You think we ought to keep one payphone so that children 20 years from now will know what that is?
Go ahead to the Barto History Museum.
That's right.
If we miss these as scrap, where do they go from there?
There's some organizations in the community that could use those.
And a lot of rental houses where they come with mattresses and no beds. Because that's not a city problem, that's an individual problem.
Yes, yeah, that is. We're trying to help out the local organizations though.
Okay.
But I, I wouldn't want you to declare, take it off the list just as part of the motion, maybe declare that part as scrap.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, do we have a motion or any other questions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we declare the listed equipment surplus with the exception of the bed frames, which we'll declare scrap and then we'll remove the three rear seat van seats altogether from the list because they're still in use.
Thank you. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Mr. Sanders. Resolution on an unopened alley.
Yes, ma'am. This is a resolution that was written by City Attorney's Office for declaring a unopened alley, uh, to be abandoned. And this property is located on Porter Street. It's owned by Mr. J.C. Waters. And this alley runs east and west through his property and basically splits his property in half. And he's trying to consolidate the property. He's, he approached us and he initiated this resolution. The City Attorney's Office also, uh, wrote a public notice, which was advertised in the paper. We have put the appropriate signs on the property to give the, um, public some notice about the alley. And, um, we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions?
Motion to approve this resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Riggs, if you don't mind coming up, our Southern Natural Gas Contract Extension.
Yes, Mayor. Instead of filing a rate case, last, last year, Southern Natural started negotiating with all their customers. And the result of those negotiations has reduced transport charges by 7% with another, uh, 4% in 2015 and a 17.2% reduction in storage cost. As part of that, uh, settlement, we have to extend our contracts through August 31st of 2015, 2016. We can't extend them any further than August 31st of 2018. So we opted for 2017.
And you think this is a, um, good thing for the city of Cartersville?
Yes, this is, is going to reduce the, the cost for our firm customers.
Any questions of Mr. Riggs? A motion?
Motion to approve this contract is presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks.
Barto County School System, Adairsville High School contract.
Uh, yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson.
Mayor, Pro Tem and Counsel. This is, uh, this will be our third year for renting the, uh, Adairsville Pool. If, if approved, it starts our, uh, our indoor, uh, swim season for the Cartersville Cobius. This year we are, uh, the past years it's been for a nine-month contract. This year, we're swimming our first two months, uh, August and September at our Dellinger Pool. And I recommend approval of this contract with the Barto County School System for use of the Adairsville High School Pool.
This is still working out with, with the Adairsville and with our swim team also?
Uh, we, again, uh, we're, we're going from nine months to seven months with intent of, of, uh, trying to save, trying to save a little money in our budget.
Any questions of Greg?
Motion to approve this contract.
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Greg. And last tonight, uh, ICMA Comparative Performance Measure Program renewal. Mr. Porter?
Yes, Mayor, Pro Tem. This is an item we've been using for the past several years, a performance measurement program with ICMA. It's an annual renewal, $5,550 budgeted item and recommend approval.
I think this has been really beneficial to compare this city to other cities, like size, and, um, to see how our citizens feel about our performance here. So it's both a check with our citizens as well as a comparative.
That's correct. And the information's posted on the website after the, we go through the process. So it is helpful information to share with our citizens.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Porter?
Make a motion to approve?
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We do have tonight a citizen survey results and a PowerPoint presentation. But prior to that, I'd like to ask council if you would like to make a motion to add two additional items tonight.
Shall move.
Okay. Second? And you have the items in front of you, they were given out. Okay, first tonight is, first tonight.
Do you need to vote on adding them?
Oh, excuse me. Do I have a vote on adding those items?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate you, Laurie. Keeping an eye on me, appreciate that. First tonight is, um, we had to get a water heater for our senior aquatic center and we had to get it fast, didn't we, Mr. Anderson?
Yes, yes, ma'am. During our, uh, our scheduled maintenance week, we, uh, observed that our water heater for the men's and women's restrooms at the senior aquatic center was leaking. We had it checked out and discovered it was the tank that was leaking and needed to be replaced. So I, I called, uh, three, three vendors, three plumbers. Um, reckon, I went with the, the low bid from Rapid Flow Plumbing, uh, for two new tankless units. And the amount is $5,884. And I, that, that was installed this past Tuesday morning so we could get our pool up and running again. And I recommend approval of this.
Just a reminder of the city council, uh, this, the building itself, senior aquatic center, was a 50/50 split with Barto County, but we got the, the end of the deal of maintaining this in the building. So this is our cost we're paying 100% of.
Any questions of Mr. Anderson or Mr. Porter?
Are you using those tankless water heaters already? Do they really work?
Well, this is our first endeavor using it. Rapid Flow was, was, was the lowest with, uh, with the replacement cost, which was the tank water heater. And in speaking with Jeff, he, he recommended going with this tankless water heaters because of the amount of gas that we did use. It would save, substantially save our energy costs. And, you know, so I'm, I'm interested to find that out. But, uh, he, he says that it will. And he also says that these units should last around 15 to 20 years, whereas the, the tank units were about seven to eight years.
Uh, be interesting. All right.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Greg. And last tonight before our citizen survey is, um, this is an authorization. Mr. Reinhardt, are you doing this for our municipal court?
Mayor, Pro Tem and Counsel, we recently made a, a change in the way that we, um, are processing some of our folks at the municipal court. We were up until about three weeks ago, having the prisoners come to the court to have their, uh, in custody hearing. That's basically their, their first hearing. And it was taking place before the, the courts actually started. With the, um, papalist society that we've now come into, we're, we're now able to let someone go, actually let Judge White go to the, to the jail to do these in, in custody hearings instead of transporting those prisoners back and forth to the, to the jail. As a result, there's been some substantial, some, it looks like there will be some substantial savings, i.e. we will no longer need two officers transporting the prisoners back and forth to the, uh, jail. And overall, it's going to make it a, a little bit more secure place to have a court. As a result, the judge is asking for a little more compensation for his extended time, if you will. He's actually spending about one hour, a little less, a little more, depending on what, what the caseload is, one hour every other week there at the jail in addition to what he's doing currently. He's asking for an increase in his, uh, compensation of about $2,600 a year.
Excuse me, any questions of Mr. Reinhardt? Any motion?
Motion to approve. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Menino, oh, Ms. Bellander, you're, you're doing.
I'm handling this, Mayor, Pro Tem. That's all right?
Excuse me, excuse me, I'll, I'll find.
We'll get through this.
Okay.
This is, uh, our citizen survey that was sent out recently to our citizens, to a number of citizens. And, uh, this, this is the, the fifth time that we've done this. This is every other year. If we want to go to the first slide, I'm talking about housing ratings. And if you look at, uh, the slide up there, it actually goes from right to left, the years 2005 up to 2013. On this particular one, we're talking about affordability of, uh, housing, availability of affordable housing. And we are above that. And the variety of housing options, which, uh, we are, we only started that collection or that, that sampling started in 2009. Says we're similar to national and regional averages on the, that chart. So that kind of gives you an idea of where we are on both those housing ratings. Next, housing costs, 30% or more of income. We're actually kind of, uh, below average on that, which is good, less than the national and regional, meaning that housing is a little more affordable in Cartersville and other surrounding areas. And that sampling was again, just for the past six years, starting 2009, every other year, so. New development, uh, again, uh, starting from right to left, you've got, uh, quality of, uh, overall quality of new development. Cartersville is similar to national and regional. And the overall appearance of Cartersville is similar to national and regional. And that one started in, uh, 2007, uh, to, to 2013, those numbers. If you have any questions as I'm going through there, please let me know. The percent rating of rundown buildings, weeds, junk vehicles is a major problem. It's actually on the, uh, kind of low end. You can see back in 2003, it was at 17%. Kind of got down a little bit. It's at 13% as of 2013. We're similar to national and regional. It's, uh, you know, obviously you want that percentage of rundown buildings and stuff to be very low, but that's a good number to have, a, a low number. Percent rating, population growth is too fast. Obviously with the downturn in economics, economy and stuff, it's kind of trended downward over the past number of years. You can see from 68% down to 39%. But it's still similar, similar to national and regional. So I don't think we have anything to be concerned about in that number. And then code enforcement, there's, uh, three effort items on here. Land use planning and zoning, uh, we're, you know, set above national, much, much above regional on that number for our land use planning and zoning, which, you know, basically we go through a process. Obviously, I had a couple of rezonings tonight. Showed through, you know, we go through that process and make sure that, uh, everybody's no, notified on that process and, and before it's approved, the council. Code enforcement, weeds, abandonment buildings, um, and animal control are similar to national and regional. You can see those numbers have actually increased over the past number of years. You recall, we've hired a new code enforcement officer, uh, how many, how many years ago is that? Chris has been with us, five, six years ago?
Six years.
Six years. So you can see that started 2003 to 2013. But you can see that number's trending up as well as animal control, which is handled by our police department. That number's trended up. So we're, you know, good numbers in those areas as well.
Above national on land use is good. They think we've got a handle on our zoning and land use policies?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
That's the end of the, the particular section for tonight. And all this information, I believe, is posted on the website?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Is there anything else to come before council tonight? I have something. Rose Lawn Festival will be coming to our city before we meet the next. It will be September the 14th and 15th. This is a big event. It's music, it's a, a juried artist. It goes on all day long for two days. We will have a lot of guests in our city and I hope that we'll be friendly and greet them and, and be aware that they could be lost and, and show them parking and so forth. It's a nice thing to have. For a city of 20,000 people, we have a lot of wonderful events. There are Smithsonian-related museums and our DDA. And I think we're very, very fortunate. People like to come here. Sometimes they move, they come here and move after they've been here for festivals. So, um, a lot of nice things coming up this fall, so please enjoy. If there's nothing else? Yes, sir?
This particular event every year, uh, makes me want to barbecue. That's when I do my best barbecue. Cause I'm right up the hill from the music.
Are you inviting people? Are you inviting people to your house for barbecue?
No, I'll just come down there.
Thank you. If nothing else, we're dismissed.
Motion to adjourn.